I'd like to call to order the Monday, December 11, 2023, regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM. Can we rise for pledge of allegiance? Right, it looks like we're all here today in person. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That we adopt the agenda as written?
Motion to approve the agenda as written, any seconds?
Second.
Countor, or any discussion or question? And all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. On to public comment, this is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing. Members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence. Speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes as we are limited to 30 minutes total for all public comments. I do have a timer that will help you, we do have one tonight, Joel Haugen, would you like to begin? On down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I don't think, I think it will take five minutes, but you know, in the neighborhood. As we approach 2024, and as we bring 2023 to a close, I would like to convey my thank you to you all for your willingness to serve and the time you volunteer to help make Scappus the best it can be. Present for last week's parks, trails, and open space plan discussion, I could not help thinking that council is analogous to a board of directors of a company. Shareholders are the citizens like me. And you, council, delegate your and the shareholders' vision to the city manager and the staff function as the chief executives and managers of the company. Last week, MIG did a fine job assembling the current iteration of the Parks Plan. But it does not appreciably differ from the 2017 version of the same, which is done at a fraction of the cost. As a grant requirement for grabhorn development, 2017 plan could have simply been updated to include grabhorn at a minimal effort and cost. My other takeaway is that MIG's plan does not reflect the aspirational directive of the shareholders or citizens as a can-do approach to the challenges before us. As Councilor Jacobs so aptly noted in her recent interview for council, we are at an inflection point in Scappus and we need to improve to win. Improvements to parks, recreation opportunities in the Scappus environment, including protection of our green space and flood plain are elemental to a winning equation. These are the elements that should be front and center, both the Parks Plan and 50-year plan, as you finalize both of these documents in 2024. Scappus has the potential to become a more vibrant, livable, and prosperous community. This, I believe, requires bold and inspired leadership. You are all certainly most capable of this. Everyone benefits from setting the bar high, and I encourage council to be more proactive in shaping our city's future in 2024. Scappus citizens and beyond will relish proactive efforts to set aspirational policies and vision for our city's growth and prosperity. I and we commend you for your dedication to our community, okay, thank you. Oh, by the way, I've got some little treat bag here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have any more, Susan, online?
Thank you.
Hi, Joel.
Hey, Larry. It's hard time. Thank you. You have a new, a new big Larry?
We've got, we've got Gus.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you, Joel.
Okay, moving on, we have a consent agenda. Tonight, we are looking at reappointment of Ty Bailey and Michelle Brown to the Budget Committee. I'm looking for someone to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those appointments.
Sir Holmes, make a motion to accept the consent agenda, any second.
All second.
Like councillor friends, any discussion or question? All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Right, on to new business, we, tonight, we are, have a hotel market study. Recently, we've got Director of the Columbia Economic Team, Paul Vogel, and the Economic Development Chair, Christine Turner, like to take it away.
Thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak about this, so this is the hotel project that I started two years ago, and I'm gonna, just so everybody understands how it started. We talked about it a lot in our Economic Development Committee, Brian Rosenthal and Lynn Wagner, for probably three or four years, maybe seven, talked about it. And finally, I just said, let's like find a hotel. So at that point, I went and spoke to a lot of stakeholders in our community, I spoke to the city, I spoke to the county, spoke to airport, larger businesses, other hotels in the area. Klatsk and I, the La Quinta, just to figure out what their occupancy was, Best Western. After quite a bit of research, I started calling also hotel developers to say, hey, we want you to look at us, we have opportunity here, trying to get an audience. I partnered with Paul and he gave me some direction and we were able to get a meeting of multiple stakeholders. Tyler was a part of that, Andrew was a part of that, Joe supposed to be a part of it, but he was out of town. With a lot of other people, and we entertained Choice Hotels and one of their developers. And out of that came Columbia Economic, Economic Team. They were able to get the money to create a market study, which Paul will talk about. But since then, we have the market study and I've shown other hotel developers, I've shown Choice, Wyndham, and just last Wednesday, Holiday and Express came. And I toured the area, showed the Mr. Parker's property, a couple of other private, private landowners' properties, and Mr., or Juana, Juana's property. And they're most interested in Juana's property at this point. What is most interesting to a lot of them are, the question is, what are the incentives that we as a city can offer to encourage business? Because, as we all know, if we have a hotel, it makes us a little bit more desirable for other things to come here. So I think as the Chairperson for Economic Development Committee, it would be great if we could really look at that as a project and see what other cities have done. We do have three developers and an investor and an engineer on our Economic Development Committee, and this is something that we've talked about is, you know, how can we come up with an incentive program? Not taking cash out of the city's pocket, but make it a desirable place for this hotel just carrying this project the rest of the way. Can you talk about your study?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Like Christine said, I mean, this whole concept started in this room with the Economic Development Committee. Excuse me, it's, it's not in our, in Columbia Economic Team's strategic plan for a couple of reasons. One, it's, it's a very specialized market. Two, you need property owners that have actually come to you and said, we want a hotel on our property. Or hotels that have come to you and, and said, we want to go someplace there, find us a place, which is more generally how we deal with economic development prospects. And so it's, it's not really in our strategic plan, but it has been something that Omic R&amp;D has talked with us about over time. They don't really have the, it's not really, it's not really in their, in their mandate to, to try and find a hotel, they, they would very much like one. They'd like to host conferences, they would like a little more convenience for researchers, et cetera. But the initiative of the Economic Development Committee and Christine to start looking into this is something that even if it's not in our plan, we wanted to support it however we could. We don't really have the capacity to take it on full, full on, but we wanted to support it how we could. So we helped Christine pull together a group of stakeholders, frankly, strategically largely grouped around Omic R&amp;D, the manufacturing workspace, and the industrial property that's here. Because you kind of have to go with your strengths and you're talking overnight stays, you can't just get by on weekends. And so we felt like one of the stronger arguments would be, we have businesses that are interested in weeknight overnight stays and extended stays. And wrap that around Omic R&amp;D and their conferencing and their research projects, et cetera. So what do you, we were happy to help get people in a room. And, you know, a big part of the battle is getting a, getting a brand here, getting somebody to show up and say, okay, talk to us and tell us what you want, tell us what you think you want. And we'll tell you what we need as, as an operator, as a brand, which they did. And the first thing they said, they, well, not the first thing, they had a few questions and it was a good discussion. People did a really great job of representing the community and talking about, we felt the compelling need was. So well, you, you really need to do market study. Talk to us about that. So they did, and we got a list of what they, that brand felt were their preferred or most liable market consultants, market study consultants. Got a few more from the Oregon Lodging Association, interviewed a couple, and selected HVS, which was on everybody's list. And we had them do a market study and, you know, a market study is not, I mean, there's a scientific aspect to it, and there's certainly a technical aspect and an accounting aspect. And they've got their own formulas of what makes sense and what doesn't make sense and all of that. But largely, it's craft and helping us pull together what we think are the most compelling aspects of the market, make that statement. And that's what this market study does, is focus on what is likely the strongest demand. We have data from Travel Oregon about, you know, I think 70, 77% of overnight stays in Columbia County are with friends or family. So we thought, actually, the most compelling argument would be, we, we gotta build a hotel so we can restore domestic relations and, and family relationships. So we had some of that data, what we wanted to have them do is talk with Omic R&amp;D about what their plans are for future conferences, the, the issues they're dealing with now with interns and, and researchers finding lodging in the area. Identify what's happening with stays, you know, where, where are people staying that are meeting with Omic R&amp;D or that are working out at, at ECC or that are, are visiting other businesses here? And then also have them talk to property owners who are, who are interested in, in the possibility of citing, citing property here. I think, talked with the mayor about the community and, and some of his views on, on building demand, that sort of thing. We felt like our sweet spot was going to be targeting weekday nights, because that's the hardest thing to fill. And we don't, we have, we have some great places go to and, and things to do and places to visit in, in our county. But we don't have, have a destination that people are typically driving here for more than two hours to do. So you just got to assess your, your strengths and your weaknesses, and that's what the study does. They came back with some recommendations that said, yeah, we think it actually does make sense. And it particularly makes sense from a business standpoint, if you're going to fill your weeknights. And you need to do that and develop some of these other things, and here are some of the, some of the other factors that you need to look at. That's the next step, take things down the road, is to have a document like that, that the industry trusts and they understand the analysis is laid out in their language. Is it going to convince them all to sign a deal and make a deal tomorrow? No, it is not, because the next step will be visiting, talking, crunching numbers. And part of that number crunching, as, as Christine alluded to, is, is how do we get our costs down? You know, how, how do we, this addresses how do you get your, or your usage up? You gotta figure out how to get their costs down. And so it's, it's like any other real estate or development deal, except the hospitality industry is really kind of its own cat. And so we got the, the group, got the band back together, got the informal working group back together. And really, we kind of stepped back into a support role, because this is something that really comes down to the property owner, if you, if you want it. And this is, this is the first step in going and getting it. It also comes down to the brands and their developers and their operators and their owners, and some of them are a combination of all those things. Getting excited about something like this and coming and looking not just at the properties that are interested, but other properties that they can identify through talking with the city, GIS. Are you interested in, there are parcels that you could build on today, there are parcels that you could get a conditional use or do some, some other land use action and potentially build there. But it's a start of a conversation with these folks. And our feeling is that as, as things are developing in, in the economy, the economy is, you know, employment is high, folks are looking to invest again. We're focusing on what we do in terms of, in terms of manufacturing and industrial and commercial job creation. That development is going to do nothing but help build demand in the process of this conversation. But literally picking up the phone and talking to them and being, dare I say, annoying enough to make them come out here, which worked. Am I shocked some of you, but it did. And then, and then really the first step of the, of the market study, this is good, you know, this is probably a reliable discussion document for a couple of years. But it was something we were able to get some, some regional tourism money to do, help use it as a catalyst and continue these conversations with property owners and community leaders who, who want to see this thing happen. Continue in parallel to support it and to try and bring in folks who, through construction jobs and through setting up manufacturing and other businesses will drive that demand.
Thank you, Paul. Have a quick couple quicker, you kind of just answered them. So I mean, CT, it's not really, wasn't up your bailiwick too, but you were able to find some funding, grant funding to be able to do this market study. And kind of going forward, what is the role of CT going to be? Is it more back onto what you're saying, if, if they come to you and say, find us some property, or a business comes and, and asks you to help find stuff, you would step in to potentially help? But otherwise, like a feasibility study, it's kind of in their hands now to start doing that.
It's, it's in their hands and, and, you know, this is, this is not like a manufacturing plant where you're looking at a lot of other factors. They're looking at a narrow set of factors and truly the economics in this, in this sector. So, so we are, we're, we're kind of oriented a different way, it's very specialized. We, we have conversations, we've gotten the group back together a couple of times, Christina had multiple conversations. Whatever we can provide in terms of contacts or bring Orla in or other, other folks to help, help guide this, we're happy to do. If a, if a property owner comes to us and, and wants us to help put together, you know, the infrastructure side of a development deal, happy to do that. We are just very limited, because our primary partner is Business Oregon, and their incentives and their programs, particularly on the finance side, are very oriented to trade, traded sector. Make something, send it out. Buy something, bring it in. And, and so we're, we're limited in our tools, except moral support, informational support, connection support, strategy, do what we can do. Help, help develop proposal and a project if we possibly can.
We have had some local landowners that seem interested in, in this opportunity. You had asked about incentives, my question is, what is our role? What do we feel that as a city we can do at this point?
I don't think we can necessarily answer that, but they did give us a list of what other cities have done, and I think that's something that it's worth like researching. Just saying, you know, these are what other cities have done, these are some ideas that wouldn't take money out of, wouldn't take cash out of your pocket per se, but would incentivize somebody to come and build here, would have that partnership. This particular piece, there's a couple of things, the piece by Bymart, that is desirable because of the location and because it's next to that empty lot that Ixtapa owns. And there potentially will be a restaurant there, so they, they really like that, they like the proximity. And there's a lot of things that go along with that, just because it's Juana who owns that piece. But there's lots of different opportunities. And also, I realize I'm tangening, but both of the developers that I've spoken to want to build initially a smaller, more economical hotel. And then as, as Omic continues to grow and develop, also put a hotel in that area. So it's, it's definitely a two-hotel project over probably a five to seven-year plan.
That's, that's actually part, I didn't dive into all the itemized recommendations, but because it was so focused really on the advanced manufacturing and, and the land base that's out there. Recommendation was for, you know, a mid-scale and up hotel with some food and some beverage. So that, plus expanded meeting space. So you can, you can host conferences there with Omic and that sort of thing. Plus, you can do meetings and you can do receptions and events and things like that. That's, operating food and beverage in a hotel is a whole different dimension. And, and so it's not frankly surprising that particularly if, if brands or developers are looking further from Omic, that they wouldn't be looking to do food and beverage. They might want to locate near those. And, and while that may not, that may not align with these recommendations, getting a property here, it's sort of like, it's sort of like building, you never want to have the only gas station on a corner. You want there to be another gas station, because you want people to remember that that's where you go get gas. And once, once you have a hotel property, the first one is the toughest. And, and then based on that experience and based on what are the gaps and what are, what are the niches can be filled, that's when the next one comes in with a probably a more strategic approach. And so that's where it comes down to, how, how badly does the city want them here? What's it willing to do?
I think we saw that with Pizza, they got the one and then they just all started to come in.
Yeah. Do you have pizza? There's a new one in Verdonia, a new one in Klatsk and I, or a pizza place.
In your experience, when you're looking at, like with our particular, our industrial property, and when a manufacturer comes here and they want to build and they don't see that we have lodging opportunities, is that, is that a barrier?
We've never really had it raised as, as a barrier, they're, they're a lot more interested in housing than they are in, in lodging. They, it's not their problem where the contractors, laborers live, it's their contractor's problem to assemble their workforce and do all that. Now, I will say the, the difference there would be a project like Next Renewables in North County, where they're going to have 3,000 over time, construction workers. But that's, that's less a hotel and more of a camping thing that we're already trying to plan for, grapple with. We're close enough to the metro area that the labor force side of the construction probably is not a factor. We've not had, we've not had anyone list that as a reason, was the lack of a hotel as a reason that they stay here? Because it's not convenient for us, but it's still possible to drive 25 minutes over Renee Lewis Pass to the corridor. Or 25 minutes into, to Northwest Portland, stay at the Silver Cloud. Not what we want to have happen, but people are kind of used to doing it right now. And that's, that's a little bit of a barrier we're going to have to get over as we, as we build support. I'll tell, I'll tell you though, if we have a nice property here, people who don't want to have to drive 30 minutes after their meetings at Omic every day, or, or wherever they happen to be every day, aren't going to. But it'll be a nice draw once it's here, if they can get what they want.
So does this, do they come to the city and ask us questions, Alex? Will developers come and start looking at zoning, looking at codes, things that, on different properties? I mean, is this going to impact staff at all on?
I mean, only to the extent that any other development would, right? They're going to come in for a pre-proposal meeting, they're going to look at their options, look at the zoning, talk to the Community Development Center. I mean, so, so nothing out of the ordinary for staff in terms of when they're actually getting serious and really want to look at developing something. It's, that's a very, you know, kind of run-of-the-mill consideration for us. I mean, obviously, this might have maybe more attention than some projects are going to get, but still, the process is the same.
Right now, we do have a transient tax in the books, off the books.
Yes, yes, I believe so, yeah, we actually do have a transient lodging tax, we just don't really have anything to collect off of it.
That's, that's a good question, and that's frankly, kind of why we're here, is this has been going on, you're the elected leaders of the community, and you deserve not to get blindsided or surprised by something. This is a slowly developing process, but it's starting to get a little traction, and relentlessness over here isn't going to let it go. So we wanted, we wanted to, to let you know what's going on, the city staff has got a copy of the study, they kind of have a general idea what's, this isn't, this isn't what you would develop hotel plans around and, and diagrams and that sort of thing. But that's what they do, I mean, they do it in their sleep. And there will be, we, we wanted the city staff to have it, so they know what's going on, they'll, they'll have questions. But these are, these are not high water use, high emissions, high power use, these are, these are not the high-impact types of development. Tend to be a smaller footprint, but they have their own really quirky economics, and hence, they're always looking for the deal.
Oh, it's so expensive to build here.
Yes.
So just to, I wanted, from, I'm hearing is, is from you, Paul, is it be kind of easier to, because having Omic, influence of Omic, easier to develop a hotel closer to Omic? And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I know that Lori is not there, but maybe NJ can answer. I think there's a limit on how many vehicles allowed on that property Juana.
True, yeah. That was addressed with Mr. Bloomberg, who owns that property, and I've talked to Lori about it a lot, as far as a trip count in an ODOT study that would have to take place. Because of COVID, the banking technology improved considerably, therefore, the trip count for, for the banks are considerably less.
Know that, I think that's been issued, because I think that's why the property is still empty. But I'm just, I think overall, I think just probably there has to be one, there can be another one, I think it would probably be nearing is, is it Omic?
But, no, I, I think from a strategic standpoint, it'd be great to have one adjacent to Omic, kind of on that campus, so that it could become part of their, you know, part of their, their residence. For researchers and clients and folks like that, and for functions and that sort of thing. The economics have to be there for that. Property around, you know, there's some Um, the property around, you know, there's some parcels around Omic that that are are currently zoned properly or in the city and and all of that. There's some parcels around it that aren't, and it may take some change. Um, the, you know, Omic's got several things in play now that are developing. They're going to start bringing more people in. If I'm in the hotel business, I may want to see a couple of years of that and data. I mean, they're very data driven. They go off of, you know, there are, there are data companies that do nothing but provide data to the hotel and hospitality industry. And these folks all know it, and it's like the Bible to them. So they may want to wait till they've seen more of that happen and get more traction that way. Um, which, but that doesn't mean that now, now that we got folks' interest and they've shown up in town and we've got got something that's packaged for them in their language that another another property couldn't happen. And um, so it's, uh, I think by the nature of hotels is you're almost required to drive to them. So trip counts and traffic is always an issue and always something to address. And and that's that's part of working out your development deals. What what have you got to do to get in there?
Yes.
Christine, I have a question. Can you just give a couple of examples of what the incentives are that other cities have given similar situations?
Yes. Uh, possible tax abatements or deferrals, reduction or discount on city permits, fees, et cetera, a transient occupancy tax contribution, landscaping or sidewalk improvement. Sometimes funds earmarked for other projects can be redirected.
Thank you.
Welcome. And I'm, I've also asked Choice Hotels to give us some ideas. This one's from Holiday Inn. But Choice is also going to create a list for me, what they've seen.
How many of those different brands have um shown greater interest? And how many have made the comment about doing something smaller by O'Kanos versus something over by Omic?
Uh, so both, actually, I've talked to Holiday Inn this week and I spoke to Wyndham last week. And both of them want to do a smaller, more economical one now in within the city. But all, all of them, all three of them recognize what Omic, Omic's potential is. But they know that right now, we just don't have it. They don't have the occupancy that they would need to build that mid-scale hotel with dining and um, a conference room and extended stay. They want to be there, probably five years is what they're expecting. But in the short term, that more economical opportunity with light dining.
Of those companies, which of their brands are they suggesting would be the start? They given any indication?
A Holiday Inn Express is what we talked about. Is that what you're asking me? Holiday Inn Express for the one on the Wana property. And the Wyndham Hotel is called, it's a microtel. It's more of a European efficiency hotel, and it does have a dining element to it.
Both of those have pool capabilities?
No pool. Up face, no pool.
Have they given any indication of how many rooms those?
Sixty-five to eighty.
The study said one-ten to one-twenty-eight apparently.
Yep, this one is just for the the lesser one. But both of them, uh, the Holiday Inn, their next brand is, they actually want a Holiday Inn or a, uh, let's see, the avid or the Candlewood dual brand at the Omic site. So they're higher, they're higher level end at the Omic site.
Are there any cities that you know of in Oregon or this area of, or this close in area of Washington that have those brands in their communities?
Uh, that have an avid or a Candlewood? I'm not familiar, but I could research it. I think Angela told us about a microtel, an Angeles from Wyndham. Um, but I can't say because I haven't researched them, but I can certainly get back to you with that.
Okay, thank you.
When I spoke to Mike Castro of Holiday Inn and I took him around and I showed him all of our property and what we're doing, he said that Scappus reminds him a lot of Sherwood five years ago. And how much Sherwood has developed with industrial, their industrial property and then just exploded. And they have three or four hotels now.
Thank you, appreciate it.
More questions? Good? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Say thank you, Paul.
Too.
Thanks, Christine.
Business number three, community video. Enter NJ Johnson with a follow-up.
Oh, thank you. Just forgot.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So I have for you today the new updated version of the community video project. We took your comments back to the video editing team CGI that we've been working with. We were able to get some shots in of Veterans Park. Uh, Councilor Jacobs, we were able to take that video of the farm field that you didn't like out of the, out of the intro. We added some mountain views, Kim. Um, we have taken away the fountain repeat of the the adult and the bunch of kids running by that happened three times. That's only in once now, so if you see it, it's not going to come back again. We had the Hundred Year Festival and Adventure Fest and a picture from the annual town meeting. We were able to get in some, excuse me, some footage of a football game. And uh, we also worked with the team for the links of either sponsors or community partners that we're encouraging people to get involved with. We can put links kind of around the video. So that can be embedded in it. I know that was a request from last time. So with that, let's get to the videos.
Got it, Who Bill, right?
No, not enough footage yet. All right, so like last time, we'll start with the welcome and then just go through there.
Well, no. The welcome, you didn't mess with.
Get the full picture.
Good, no sound.
You should have Tyler dress you for these public events.
Get a safe house. That's all you'll get.
Listen on the wide.
Yeah. Um, not sure why it's not playing sound. Give me just a moment. Susan, I think I might have to send you the link to this. Because I'm worried if it plays from my system, it's going to be like a microphone feedback loop. So.
All Mark.
Oh, no, I'm a big city lawyer from New York. I found Scappus, Oregon.
Got the plot already figured out.
Yeah, can you just go to full screen on the bottom right of the frame? Oh, so go to Teams then? Windows.
There you go.
Welcome to Scappus, Oregon. With a friendly small town atmosphere and a wide variety of attractions and amenities, Scappus has something for everyone. Okay, I'm talking about that's important. Scappus offers balance of world and earth and access to exceptional educational, cultural, entertainment, recreational opportunities. Explore chapter landing, see views of the Doma Channel. Walk or bike along the prairie trail which follows more than 20 miles between Scappus and Verdonia. Scappus features the second largest cable in the world and the 50-foot tall East Candlewood Bridge. City is also home to the Scappus Airport. One of the most traveled non-towered airports in Oregon because it sees over 16,000 operations every year. Where they go raising their family, starting a business.
You know.
Looking to be.
Living.
Help one another. Scappus has it all.
That's what these videos, they, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, so it'll go to the next one. And then can you click full screen at the bottom? Click in the bottom right, yeah.
The. Holding many of these a good environment. Scappus residents enjoy an exceptional quality of life. Scappus School District dedicated to helping local students bring a well-rounded education to achieve their full potential while preparing them for college or career. When it comes to higher education, the Ford Community College Omic Training Center is a great place to start with the apprenticeship programs and manufacturing. City's beautiful parks offer to get this opportunity. Partnering active agents.
Yeah, that's.
The community comes together through various events during the years, whether it's Puget's Fire or Scappus's Friendship Festival. Event performances, activities, and refreshments to hold them in enjoying. Scappus Community and Senior Centers offer all sorts of opportunities for being known, including gardening and a variety of classes. No matter what brings you here, Scappus has everything you need to live well.
Uh, you'll have to go out of full screen briefly.
Changes our patch or our logo or our badge.
Scappus is a fast-growing suburban city, maintains its strong community ties while developing the modern amenities of a good neighborhood. City is home to abundant natural resources that have sustained the community for years, along with available land and buildings for industrial development, locally owned businesses, to larger operations. Scappus can accommodate the many businesses and industries. The Scappus Airport, the second most traveled non-towered airport in Oregon, Columbia Commerce Center, local industrial park, and sites available for development, leading the way in high-tech innovation, research and development. The Oregon Manufacturing Innovation Center. Their partnership with PCC Omic Training Center. Located on the north end of town, exposed specialized in taking transport solutions. Scappus works closely with many organizations to improve local quality of life and encourage further development in the area. The Small Business Development Center was also created by small businesses with all the tools they need to succeed. Whether you're starting a new business or looking to grow, Scappus is ready for you. Scappus has a rich history. Of the Native American tribes, they call the Scappus area home. European settlers, locals, you know, live in the river. Trivial lands of the Scappus plains. Today, the city's past can be explored through the Scappus Historical Watchroom, which features many city's landmarked works. Watts House Building, 1902 by James Grant Watts, the town's founders and the first mayor of the city. Now known as the Watts House Pioneer Museum. It's maintained by the Scappus Historical Society and listed on the National Historic Register. The Heritage Park Fountain is designed by Scappus-based artist Michael Curry. Pictures stylized tree represents the community's historic roots, timber. Scappus Veterans Memorial, Heritage Park proudly honors the Watts Park community's benefits. For the bright future ahead, Scappus continues to write its own story. In our community, the value of community organizations, our quality of life, by the interests and spirit those organizations uphold. Community organizations provide opportunities for friends and neighbors to give back, get involved, come together while creating a sense of pride that the city may all share. Contact a community organization today and discover the contribution you can make through your participation and support.
Oh, we made the video.
That's it. There any thoughts, reactions? Hmm.
On Scappus is and. Out of our. Like, I'm not sure what we're doing. All of them? Or we're?
Yeah, these, these will all be posted together. It won't be one continuous video, but people will get to sort of select like, oh, I'm a, I'm a business owner looking to relocate. I can click on economic development.
Yeah, but they'll be listed. One of the schools obviously had a lot more schools.
Yeah, quality, so it's, yeah, welcome with the mayor, quality of life, economic development, history, community organizations. Yeah.
The last one that talked about get hold of your community group and get involved. It would be great to have like on our website, just a link to that one. And they click it and it will have a list of all the community organizations within our group with a link.
So that that's what we were able to talk to them, talk to the CGI folks and add is have like around the video or below it, or however we format it, some links to different community groups, including city committees and things like that. Uh, just make it super easy for people to, you know, get involved if they see that video.
Great.
Um, I don't know how far we can get into continuing to edit these, but what about a call to action at the end of each video? Because I only know, I could have missed it, but I think there was only one that actually had a call to action. But call to actions are very important. Getting purposes.
Yeah, that's sort of, that's sort of what we tried to do. We tried to leave like a, like a sense of opportunity. Um, it, you're right, it's not like instructive, but it's like Scappus says what you need to live well.
Mm-hmm.
You're a business owner, what is your call to action? Um.
I think it's, yeah, it said like Scappus is ready for you for economic development.
You're looking, yeah. It's embarrassing. You're looking to move to Scappus, click here and available for contract.
I think that, I think the last one was the community action part. I think there's still some work to it. Um, there may be some kind of like action. It'd be great to kind of either showcase somebody like sessions um, or maybe someone that is in committees and just say kind of their experience. I'm not sure, I know how 15 seconds or they have to be or limited time. But um, I, I, I just felt a little too, not enough, yes, it was half done, like the last community one.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, one, one thing we had talked about kind of early on is trying to, trying to eliminate like, you know, too much time being focused on one person because a committee member or any member of a community organization could leave at any point. Um, that's sort of the challenge there.
I do like that one, though. I mean, that's, I'm really starting to stress more and more, how do we get involved? How do we volunteer our time? I want people to get involved. That's a good one. Ask them call to action. No, Scappus needs you. We need, you know, you to get involved. Um, you know, please click the banner. And then we have on our website just a list of every opportunity and some link.
Hmm.
We update and it goes right to the senior center. And then it talks about them or Watts House, a volunteer or Historical Society. Or it'd be great to be able to then direct people to get more involved. Right there, or there on the website, there's an opportunity to click here and more about it.
Hmm.
Mayor, can you give us just a reminder really quick so we can stay in scope of what these videos are intended to do and how this was first brought to us so that we're making sure that we're staying in line with what we're intended to do?
Yeah, so we, we had videos like this that were existing with, it was. Yeah, so we, we had videos like this that were existing with, it was, I don't know the year, but it was, it was a while ago. And the, the community looked very different. We had a different mayor doing the welcome video. And so we, we needed an update. Um, our logo was out of date on so on and so on. Um, so an update of our existing videos, cause up until we started this project this year, those were the videos that were sitting on our city website. Um, so people would get kind of an outdated view of what Scappus looked like. So the original start of this was to get. Um, you know, to get a more update view. Now the like stepping back, the broader purpose of this is for, you know, community pride. People can see it and kind of like be proud of living or working in Scappus. It could be to encourage a business to see what we're, we have and what we're about. It could be to encourage tourism or, you know, people if they're moving to come locate to Scappus. It's kind of like an attraction and community pride tool. Um, but it, you know, it sits on our city website. We would promote it on social media. Um.
The CGI out promoting it though, all over. When you hit Google and type something in, will it pop up to get people in other cities, other states? You have to type in city of Scappus.
They, they just do so many that if you just typed in their company, we wouldn't be the ones to come up.
It doesn't have to be.
Hmm.
But it can just be. If you're trying to welcome. Go to Scappus, it should be welcome all.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can have a conversation with CGI and see, see how that would work.
At least they could, yeah, put one of them up there in another language.
Hmm.
And also two, um, caption.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I can see, I can't promise, cause this video is, in terms of cost, it's free to us. Um, the only, the only thing we get is, you know, they're, they get to contact businesses, um, in hopes of sponsorships.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, NJ, thank you so much for taking the feedback last round. Uh, I could totally see the changes. I, I do appreciate all the changes. Um, the videos flow a lot more smoother to me. Um, um, changes that you were able to implement. Um, of course, since this is free, uh, whatever we could do for additional languages or. Um, closed captioning would be great.
Yeah.
Um, but overall, thank you very much. I, I think these, these turned out really good with those updates.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I'm happy to, I'm happy to have the conversation. I just, I don't know what our service scope includes with them right now.
Thank you, NJ.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, recreation immunity letter. Think you all have in your packet a letter. But Assistant City Manager Isaac Butler will.
Isaac, just to clarify, it's.
Thank you, Paul.
Back to back, guys. I mean, I went back to back. It's just the same thing both times?
The letter?
Yeah.
I believe, well, so I didn't, I wasn't really involved in like the. Aspect.
Okay.
Like, I mean, I wrote the letter. Yeah, they're very similar.
Okay.
This was on behalf of council that I wrote this, but I think you might be the better presenter for them.
Yeah, so you're, they are very similar just to the point of a call fraction at the end. Has kind of.
Yeah.
Different calls fraction based on who the audience is. So, um, for these two, I think the two intended audiences. One, I think we would hope that we could, um, get other communities within the county and maybe more broadly. Uh, to sign on, well, to, to advocate for, um, a similar position here that legislature worked to restore. Some of the recreational immunity, which, um, understanding where the legislature is at, you already had to have your bill. Filed for drafting, um, so likely not this legislative session. It's a short session, but you know.
You can always gut and stuff.
Right, there's the gut and stuff, so we'll see. Um, and then the second one would be, uh, a letter that goes directly to the elected officials that. Working in Salem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Jacob.
Uh, Council Holmes, thank you very much for spearheading this. Um, definitely, uh, in support in signing, uh, both these letters. Thank you.
Thank you staff for taking on the draft. At the direction of council from the previous meeting, yeah.
Looking for a motion then to accept approve this?
Yeah. And then we, we would put together final versions, circulate them for signatures and then we could distribute as. And kind of what would the range of the distribution list be particularly for the other communities?
Hmm.
I mean, I think we would probably kind of grab up our kind of. All, um, South County partners probably initially for, um, the organizational outreach and then for the elected officials. Um, again, just probably going immediately for the people that represent us and then. Reach out to LOC and just ask if there's anything else, you know, if it would help, be helpful to them maybe to have a copy of this is kind of, that was kind of my thinking.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor.
I'd like to make a motion to council, uh. Accepts these letters as written on page one sixteen. There's two versions for the record, one sixteen and one seventeen in the council package. Um, as presented.
Motion by Council Miller to accept the letters. Page one sixteen and one seventeen, which immunity letters. Presented, any second?
Second.
Jacob seconds. Any discussion or questions? Any none? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Both? And Karen? Thank you guys very much. Um, now to number five, resolution number twenty-three dash nineteen, a resolution declaring police department surplus property. Steve, Stephen Lugal and Assistant. Dick Butler to present.
Well, I absolutely did nothing on this. Isaac did it all. I, I simply asked Isaac to help and he did.
As things.
Being honest.
Uh, from time to time, uh, we come before you to ask for approval for surplus. Um, the things that we bring you are really at the end of their useful life. The kinds of items that we'll find on this list on paper, they might look like, sound like radios or they might sound like shelving. They really are at the end of their life cycle, things that, that we just can't really, so. Um, what you have before you is a resolution, uh, very similar to the one that you saw from Public Works about nine months ago. Almost word for word, the only real big difference is the list. Um, so we have to bring all of the items who ever wish to surplus out before council for approval. So you're going to find things on here as small as, so they don't have lids to things as big as a police car with a blown head gasket. Um, so this, this list, as you can go through and see is quite, uh, long. Most of these things were piled up. Down at Public Works, um, there's a number of bays. One of them was reserved for the police department for like large evidence. Um, storage of things we might need in event of an emergency. And over the years, things built up and cluttered over full. Um, when we got into this, um, really sparked this was that we had hired our. Evidence tech and we went down there and there was something like forty bicycles that had been there for years and they were rusted together. So we kind of were like, oh, we probably need to. So went through, looked at what really was garbage, pulled things that might have some value aside, assessed those. And this is really the list of what is potentially usable, just not by us. So, um, like the ra, the radios are about ten years old. Um, might still function, but they're just not really in the currently accepted format. They're not really useful. Um, we found, you know. Kind of like a radar gun from like the eighties, like cased in leather. I mean, stuff you'd see on like. Um, so we really did assess for what we could use. There's still a bit of stuff down there.
But like Hollywood needs some props?
Yeah. Yeah, they're pretty cool. Uh, uh, no function there though. So, um, this list is, is inclusive. Um, it goes from top to bottom. Um, the police car is probably the largest item. Um, this car is from twenty fourteen. I don't have the exact mileage on it, but it has a lot of engine hours. Um, enough so that, you know, the repairs on this have been costing us thousands of dollars every couple of months at least. And, um, latest is a blown head gasket, uh, three thousand to replace it. And with a car this old, with the kind of engine hours, the kind of miles, at some point, just like you in your personal life, get to a point where. Anymore, you really need a replacement. And, um, as you've been hearing over the last year or two, this is something we've needed. Our fleet's all about the same age, which is actually. On the part of the same time, so. An opportunity for us to kind of get on that. Do we have any specific questions about items or our process?
I only, I mean, you keep everything here and then when you get enough to do a resolution. Need to clean it out. It's, I mean, you can't just get rid of a couple of items here or there. You're doing it.
Yeah, and actually that's a really, a really, um, good question. I think one of the things that came up in this is that, you know, some of the stuff we're asking. For the surplus are like old seat belts. Jack. Dividers, you know, things that have very low street value, very low value for resale. And, you know, one of the questions about this that I had is, you know. Is this something we could put on a consent agenda? Is this something we want to look at to maybe put some kind of a floor on to say, okay, if you have a surplus lot of. X dollars or less, how do other cities do this where you're not having to bring smaller lots to council to incentivize surplusing? Public backs some dollars instead of just. In the garbage, sending it to e-cycle, donating it. Um, so one other question, that was actually a question I wanted to ask you was, you know, is, is there something that you would be comfortable with? Do you want us to look into some kind of a different situation to be able to surplus this kind of smaller lots instead of having to hold it for. Years to get enough of it, make it worth it. Than the same.
Yes.
So based on our feedback though, so do we have a policy already on how we do this?
This is in the, um, contracting, so it specifically says surplus. So it, it doesn't say surplus over a thousand. It doesn't say surplus of vehicles or things that are on your asset list. Just surplus. So anytime we want to surplus something, you have to come get it. So if you pointed the back of the room and we had a stack of chairs that we didn't want on the surplus.
Donating or in the garbage, you don't.
And so in the past, I think a lot of things have gone that way where maybe they had use for other government, probably not in the United States or another party, probably not here in the city. Um, and they've been donated or they've been thrown away, um, whereas we could do a small cost recovery. A barrier to entry to this.
Then that money goes into.
Uh, depends on. Yeah, so for all the police department items, those will go to the police department. If they were, uh, city hall, they go to the city hall budget. Public Works goes to Public Works. Um, so things follow those funds pretty, pretty directly.
Is there a way to put it as just a consent agenda and at, at that time where, where we review it and see that there's a lot on it we want to talk about, we can pull it off, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Lot a consent agenda and just have a few, a list.
I just have one clarification. So, or when you say it's under the contract, are you referring to two seventy-nine or are you referring to an actual city policy?
City policy.
Okay, yeah, cause I, I just want to make sure we have an actual policy because.
Yeah, it's in, it's on the city's contracting ordinance.
Okay, yeah, cause as, you know, new personnel come in or whatever, they read policy manuals and expectation, but they don't go and read ORSs. So I just want to make sure that we have an actual policy and then whatever we decide here gets, you know, of course, uh, thank you.
Yeah, and I actually think we're doing some work on that.
We are.
Right now, so.
Recently, we did raise all of the limits in alignment with the new, um, rules that came out of legislature. However, um, we had our new legal counsel take. At it, cause we're just kind of having them fresh and to look at some documents and she had some further suggestions. The idea would be to come back in January, so. Could always make that change, any other changes as well, but we do have some.
I guess what I'm getting at is I just don't want us to have like a verbal. Understanding of like what we're doing here. I would, I want to make sure that we had a policy and that we're going to update that policy and then that moves forward with new staff too, as new staff may come in. I wouldn't have it any other way.
Yep.
Thank you.
And if you send this to auction, if it doesn't sell at auction, does it get tossed then at that time?
Um, they, as far as I know, they kind of keep things on the books and what they'll do is they'll just kind of start bulking multiple lots together. So if, say we sent all this and, I don't know, like a trip counter was there. It didn't sell for a couple of months. They would put it with some other things to kind of move it along. Um, they take a percentage and send us a check.
Anybody have a? Motion to approve the resolution?
I have one more quick. Next question. Um, so in regards to the vehicle that's listed here, I know we'd purchased a couple of new vehicles with ARPA funds. Uh, was this in, was that purchase in anticipation of like this retirement or does this put us down a vehicle?
This, this puts us down one vehicle. Um, it's my understanding that right now if we had fully staffed and everybody need to like. About, we'd have to have people bringing cars. So we don't, we don't actually have enough vehicles for your officer to have. And so every vehicle is really important asset. Damage to one, having one down for a week can, can be detrimental. Um, certain folks have take home cars, depending on what the circumstance is, and it just means we have a pretty small, pretty lean fleet and so. Careful with how we treat them. Like the police where you just run the car and then you go back and grab another one.
Well, I would say in the last couple of years, we have added three vehicles. So that we're not aggressively looking into that, but also trying to be careful not to replace them all at the same times. We don't have this problem again.
So this is one of five cars right now from.
What we're crossing our fingers on is that perhaps next fiscal year, we can add one more, kind of again, just sort of an A O B. Again, just to spread out.
I have a question. So if it shows by resolution that we have to declare, um, its property as surplus. Are we open to seeing that language come back and maybe altering how the language looks? In terms of how council needs to approve or not approve what that looks like?
Yeah, so well, either, either these types of items can still go by resolution as we're doing it now and you can just put it on consent agenda. And, you know, you just don't have to discuss it if you don't want to. Or we can actually look at mending the process in our actual, um, contracting rules so that. Um, maybe there's some kind of threshold or dollar amount or, you know, some trigger that some of it just goes through. At an administrative level and then some would need to come to council. So those are, you know, options.
I think those would be good discussions to have. See the options and trout.
You have threshold, you might have some big tractors or police car or you may have empty buckets with no lids.
Where did these three large cooking pots come from?
You have no.
No idea.
Honestly, they came from auction. We found a lot of stuff in there that had like surplus labels.
Then we bought.
They were, they were. Butts.
Obviously you have to, these once resolution, they all have to go to auction. You can't have employees or, or. Citizen. Can tell us where the auction is.
And then do we have any other inventory sitting around that you anticipate having to go through this process for?
Uh, yeah, this, this covers pretty much everything. I have a small bit of computer parts and cords in my office. Getting to have enough. Um, so this is kind of covered in that computer parts, monitors, two old, um, cases without a hard drives. Uh, some VGA cables that we are updating.
Mr. Mayor?
We, we've done a lot of cleaning out. I think this was really the last major area where we have a significant.
If we consider some changes, it would allow you to implement those going forward. There's nothing else.
Yeah, anything that's a goal is kind of streamline, bring those things out, being able to have the flexibility of some of those smaller things to. Try to get some of those public dollars back, low cost, without having to do a staff. As much time where we can find some of the bigger items or bigger lots, you know.
So Isaac, on that note, um, can we look at our policy to see if it specifies different things like computers or any devices that store personal information or potentially confidential information? To make sure that we have a defined policy on how we go about disposing of those things? Thank you.
Think he's in the security business or something like that?
I just completed a.
Data breaches are real.
Uh, uh, similar audit, so it's on my mind.
Okay, before we vote, I mean, I noticed on this resolution, it says like, whereas resolution twenty-three dash fourteen.
That would be the public contracting resolution.
Any motions to adopt resolution twenty-three nineteen?
Mr. Mayor, I move council adopt resolution twenty-three nineteen, a resolution declaring police department surplus property.
Should by Council Holmes to adopt resolution twenty-three nineteen, a resolution declaring police department surplus property. Any second?
Second.
Gregson, any discussion? Any none? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Both? Karen? Hey, now we're talking about potentially canceling the January second meeting. Anything come up lately that would be?
Oh, I think we can. Schedule things elsewhere if you all want to.
And so the next meeting is right after Martin Luther King Day on January sixteen?
There's just one meeting that month?
So you would have that meeting and then there's that training scheduled with CIS for the twenty-second.
Oh, that's right.
That'd be from six to eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a training with CIS on one twenty-two. Um, obviously, if something really drastically comes up and we need to meet before the sixteenth, we could still meet ninth or, I mean, you can always make a meeting up if you need to.
You can always add one.
Any reason then, um, have to keep that one? Anyone else? Need a motion to approve for one accountable meeting? Meeting? Council Santiago?
I move to cancel with the January second.
Cancel meeting on January second, twenty-four. Any second?
Second.
Grayson, all those in favor, or any discussion? None. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those. To the calendar. Okay, we're pretty much done for the rest of December. Uh, so I have January first. The office is closed. New year. January fifteenth, the office is closed. January sixteenth, council meeting, seven P M. January eighteenth, EDC meeting at noon. Parks and Rec meeting at six P M. We are looking at January twenty-second, training session from six to eight. Members. And Thursday, January twenty-eight, twenty-fifth, planning commission at seven P M. Do have our council retreat and goal setting. Nine A M. At P C C O M X. January twenty-seven. Okay, any updates, City Manager Rains?
Um, no significant updates from me at this time. Um, just wanted to remind everybody that the holiday dinner is on Wednesday night and just hope to see you all there. And that's it.
The senior center, right? Six o'clock?
The senior center?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, please chief, look out.
Nothing new for me this month, except the wish you have a Merry Christmas. Oh, well, yeah, we did have Donut Day was successful. Um, actually, uh, ended about an hour early, got rid of all the donuts fairly quickly. Did, uh.
Always have.
I want to say four hundred and eighty pounds of food. And then a considerable amount of, uh, cash. Besides that, I just want to wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Council Jacob?
Yes. So, uh, last week, uh, myself, along with Mayor and Counselor Grayson, Miller and Santiago and City Manager Rains, we went to a reception at O M C for a potential economic opportunity, uh, for St. Helens and Scapus. And, um, it's for a solar manufacturing company. And from what I learned, that this could be a pretty sizable investment for St. Helens as well as for Scapus. And given it appears to be on a fairly accelerated timeline, um, I am going to connect with some key stakeholders and city officials just to learn more about this opportunity, um, and how far along it is and just find out what this could be for us in the immediate future. And I'll come back and report findings.
Thank you. Sir Santiago?
Um, first, before I forget, happy holidays to everyone. Um, hope you guys are having a great holiday and continue to have a great holiday and safe. Uh, also attended that meeting. Thank you. And I'll let Mayor report more about it. Um, I also attended the Port of Columbia, uh, strategic plan meeting and it was very interesting. Actually, it was a great turnout, according to them, the biggest turnout. Um, and they, uh, I think they did reach out to the stakeholders, they said, in August of twen- of this past year. Um, they did a survey and, um, received about a hundred and something responses. And I just aft- after the meeting, I think you're, you need to kind of go back to the drawing board because I think that they do need a lot of more feedback from the community. And so they, uh, the idea is to have a draft by January of twenty twenty-four. And then to have a final plan by, um, no, I'm sorry, draft by January and then final by February of twenty twenty-four. So, um, it's quick, you know, quick, but I think they still have a lot of, um, questions to answer the community. And so if, uh, they did say that they're going to put the draft on their website, so feel free to, um, reach out to county, uh, to the port, sorry, to the port and, um, and then look out for their surveys on their website and then also the draft. But, um, I'm also going to be following up with what's going on there.
Thank you.
Happy and safe holidays, everyone.
Council Hall.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, uh, I wanted to report out, last week I had mentioned, um, trying to connect with the sheriff to explore kind of what, uh, their new levels of operation and resourcing can mean to services. Uh, for those of us in the community, we did get a chance to meet and, um, we talked about both, um, their opportunity to provide coverage for us in the immediate, which I don't believe we've exercised just yet. Um, but look forward to seeing what that can do to help us further get to our coverage goals. And we also did discuss the potential of more extended contracting services. And I know this is something that previous councils or some council members have looked into in the past. Um, and I think it's just a good opportunity to understand in the event that we would ever need to exercise another option. You know, things can change very quickly sometimes and that's not the time that you want to be fact finding and trying to find information and make large decisions. I'm a big into the idea of being prepared. And I think if we can, um, walk through and just gather a little information about what opportunities, what challenges it could present for us is an option there that exists. Um, the sheriff did put together a few numbers. We know that they're currently providing services of Kotskani. So they sent me the agreement for that. And then he mentioned that this is a fairly common arrangement um, for smaller communities that have found it difficult to continue to retain talent, um, and build their force. Uh, Cornelius in Washington County, Clackamas has a few, including the city of Wilsonville. Um, there's also potentially some, uh, fiscal savings available when you start to, um, kind of consolidate, uh, services and create some efficiencies there, you know, and I think also it's our responsibility, if you have an opportunity to save some tax dollars to look into, you know, whether it makes sense or not for a community. And so we're looking at the tune potentially of about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in savings. Um, again, if we were ever in a place that we needed to kind of walk down, uh, this road and explore it further. So I do think with our goal setting coming up and the budget cycle happening, um, that we'll be preparing for, it's probably worth taking the time, we have about a month, five weeks, um, off to just continue to put together maybe a list of questions. Get a little more information so that we can come back and just have that information to share with council. And we can decide if it warrants continuing further investigation or not, if we've just got enough information kind of in our pocket to draw upon in the future if we ever need it. Um, so I did forward this information that I received from the sheriff to the mayor today and asked him to consider maybe putting together just a kind of small working group to put together some questions to send to the sheriff and gather information. Um, over this kind of break for our meetings. So, um, I'd like to maybe talk about that. If that's of interest to folks, I would be happy to kind of lead on that and continue the conversation. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you're interested in being directly involved in that.
Yeah, I think I would. I mean, I kind of ran on that and talked a lot about it and, and wanted to kind of be part of it, make sure one, we're transparent and open and, and so to make sure. Yeah, I'd like to be part of it.
And then I think we can add up to one more, um, if needed, without kind of, you know, running into our issues and that in the immediate, just for this initial stage. So, I don't know.
Anybody else? I know Tyler has the most background on the information and make sure that the questions are asked.
Yeah.
Then we, yeah, and I'll go ahead and forward this preliminary information so everyone's got it. Um, and if there are additional questions specifically that you have, send it, we'll compile a list. We can run that list by folks as well to make sure for completeness. Um, and just see what all there is to learn.
Mayor, do you have a question?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, if you have any question, any information you may have, I would, maybe if you're point person, send them to the you direct, I mean, one person.
Right, that's.
It's. Okay. Uh, anything else? Thank you, Miller.
Uh, first, I just want to say happy, I hope everybody has a happy and safe holiday. Columbia County Board of Commissioners, uh, I attended the, uh, December sixth, uh, Columbia County Commissioner meeting. Uh, there's not really much to report there, except, um, that they have a couple of open positions. So if anybody's, um, interested, community's interested in a potential job with Columbia County, um, definitely check out their employment opportunities on their website. Um, last meeting, I, uh, said that I would give an update on the nine-one communications liaison. And that's essentially what I'm doing here, is just giving updates on, um, the two liaison roles that I have here. Um, so I'm just going to kind of go through a timeline here and I think it tells its own story. And, uh, I, I may have additional comments here at the end. So early in, uh, June twenty twenty-three, uh, Columbia County Sheriff's Office, City of Columbia City, City of Vernonia and C S Capus entered into an agreement with AdCom Engineering. Um, they're a local engineering firm in Oregon and they have an actual licensed professional engineer, which is an actual thing. So if you go and read the O R S chapter two seventy-nine, there's different exceptions and different requirements for different things related to engineering and the qualifications of the engineer. Um, I do want to note that, um, it's been discussed several times that, uh, the consultant, uh, company called Federal Engineering, even though the word federal isn't there, I just want to be clear that it is a private for, uh, profit company. They don't actually have any professional engineers on their, um, staff. That's what I've been told repeatedly by people in the industry. Um, I've not independently verified that. Um, so part of the scope of work of the agreement that C C S O, um, and the cities that I mentioned had, um, listed in their scope work for AdCom to complete was to, um, develop all the need requirements and the specifications for those agencies, for those user agencies, and then relay those in the terms that consultants use, that engineers use for this type of thing to nine-one and their consultant. And that included, um, a request that we had made in the ad agreement, um, to AdCom that Susan Ronning, who's the principal and the professional engineer, actually review the things that they were sending to vendors to, um, to provide a proposal on, because she wanted to make sure that it met the needs of all the agencies that had hired her. On August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, um, AdCom's, um, principal engineer sent a letter to Mr. Fletcher at the nine-one district's, um, consultant with a technical memo and need requirements developed on behalf of, uh, the county and cities. Uh, there was no reply by Mr. Fletcher. Uh, Ms. Ronning checked back on September sixth and received an email September sixth that said, I appreciate your effort from, uh, Mr. Fletcher, who's the nine-one district director. At the October ninth, twenty twenty-three, nine-one, um, district board meeting, Mr. Fletcher provided a document to the board that said, and this is a cut and paste from his document, Federal Engineering has completed the development of system design requirements and expectations. This document was presented to Motorola as of October tenth with a deadline of November seventeenth. There's a likelihood of a request for additional time due to the holidays. On October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Ms. Ronning from AdCom Engineering emailed Mr. Fletcher the following. Hi, Mike, could you please reply back with a copy of Federal Engineering System Design Requirements and Expectations document those you read into Motorola as October tenth? I would like to review the document with respect to law agencies' user needs and system requirements previously submitted, regard Susan. On October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Fletcher responded to Ms. Ronning saying, in part, Columbia nine-one does not have a copy of the document you were seeking. On October sixteenth, Ms. Ronning replied to Mr. Fletcher and pointed out what he said in his board and his, or to his board in his update on October nineteenth, which I just read, saying that they had a document that they submitted to Motorola. Uh, Mr. Fletcher has not replied to Ms. Ronning since her reply on October, or excuse me, yeah, since her reply on October sixteenth. On October fifteenth, I submitted a public records request, which the district assigned twenty-three, four, five, five as the records request number. And I asked for all information that's submitted to Motorola related to the statement by C nine-one C D executive director. And I again copied and pasted what he said in his document. And that was that Federal Engineering had completed the development of system design requirements and expectations. This document was presented to Motorola as of October tenth. And I got a reply back to that public records request that said, the district has no public record responsive to this request. So there are some new council members, um, since this, basically, since this whole endeavor started. And the endeavor being the nine-one's trying to replace the radio system and they're going to be asking for, what we've seen from their consultants, anywhere from twenty to thirty-five million dollars from the community. And from everything they've said, it's going to be in the form of a bond and levy. And so there has been pushback about getting, um, competitively bidding it, do a request for proposal and not just running to Motorola Solutions as a, um, attempt to sole source. Um, so far, that has not been the direction that they have went. They have, as you heard, there, they sent, they sent those documents, or excuse me, that opportunity only to Motorola. And so that is a concern, especially, concern of mine at least, um, because of the amount of money we're talking about. And of course, we want to get the best deal that we can get from a qualified vendor that can meet all the requirements. And that's, um, from what we've seen so far, that's not what's happening. Um, so that's just an update on where they're at. Um, you know, there, there's going to be additional revelations, obviously, in the coming months. But, um, that's an update on what I call lack of transparency and some very questionable conduct. Thank you.
You, Council Miller? President Grayson?
Sure. Um, the holidays can bring a lot of joy and happiness to people, but also a lot of stress and unknowns. And our schools in the Scapu School District have been collecting food items, um, to donate to the Kuanis Scapus Fire Department Share and Care Program. Um, we've got Grant Watts working to get peanut butter and jelly and Peterson doing granola bars and cereal and soup at the middle school. And, um, starting tomorrow, we'll be fagging and putting together all the items, um, for the families that have been registered with the Share and Care Program. So I think it's great that our youth are, um, working hard to support each other. And, you know, I talk to my kids about how, you know, you go to school and you're friends with people that struggle and, you know, we support when we can. And, um, I know there's a lot of families that from year to year, they're in need and others, they're not. And, um, it's always, uh, really heartwarming to see our community come together for that share and care program. Um, I just completed my seventh year as a counselor. So, um, have had a couple of babies in that time and different things, but, um, looking forward to starting off the new year. Of course, everyone at this point knows that my house is for sale. I do still live there. Um, and, you know, when the time comes, uh, I will have to announce my resignation. But until that time happens, I'm here to work hard and I'm excited to be a part of the team.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. You got a big day Friday, so you're gonna.
Oh, I gotta be Mrs. Backus on Friday. Fill her shoes, yeah.
Good class. Um, thank you very much. Uh, just really want to thank, uh, Beth, a member of our budget committee and Sarah, the new alternate on our planning commission for hanging in there online all night. Thank you for joining us. And again, I'm surprised, uh, Whoville, we had a big thing on Channel twelve news. Janet and Wanda did a great job going through that and really promoting all of Scapus and Whoville. Um, that was a lot of fun. So get out there if you haven't. I think they had over five hundred people on Saturday. And, um, it's been really well. We're hearing a lot of good things. Um, thanks again to staff for helping me get through another meeting and have Merry Christmas and have a great, uh, new year if we don't talk to you before then. Thank you.